I'd like to call to order Apache Junction work session to order. Your call.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder.
President.
Councilmember Cross.
Here.
Councilmember Heck.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Nessar.
President.
Councilmember Soller.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Okay, presentation, the discussion on economic development agreement with Greater Phoenix Economic Council.
Good, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Pat Ainsworth, Economic Development Director. Tonight before you is a presentation by Brad Smith with GPEC with regards to the one-year contract with the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. Before he gets up, just want to say how great it is to work with this organization. It's kind of like having 35 additional staff members to help with numerous things, and their staff is highly skilled, highly trained, and very appreciative of all their help. And they've literally helped everything with even gathering data for our Downtown Master Plan. They've helped with business attraction, business retention, and a lot of regional efforts that bring jobs to the Apache Junction community. So I want to, again, thank you for having this on the agenda tonight, and want to introduce Brad Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. How are you tonight?
Okay. How are you doing?
I'm doing all right, doing all right. Again, so my name is Brad Smith. I am representing the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. I've been at GPEC for over 24 years now, which is a long time in a lot of people's minds, but clearly enjoy working on behalf of the region. I'm a native Arizonan, grew up in the Phoenix area, and, you know, enjoy working with companies and bringing that investment and those jobs to the Greater Phoenix market.
Is there a keyboard?
Yeah, I think you can just hit the arrows.
Is there a keyboard?
I don't think he has.
Oh, there isn't a keyboard.
No, and this one doesn't work.
We'll help you with that.
Hit the red, greener than the yellow button.
Just say next slide, and I'll help you out.
Okay. Yeah, I'm pleased to announce, too, I mean, for the eighth year in a row, we've been, GPEC has been ranked as one of the top EDOs in the country. I clearly think that we have some of the best economic developers across the country, led by our CEO, Chris Camacho, and our team in research and marketing and strategy, and our business development team, which I help lead at GPEC. So, next. We're a regional organization representing the 22 cities here in Maricopa and Pinale County. We have about 222 private sector investors, which make up a little over about 70% of our budget. So it's a great regional, public-private partnership that many regions and cities across the country have mirrored for their economic development efforts. So the private sector knows that their monies are being matched, and the public sector has some skin in the game, if you will, but their funds are clearly being matched by the private sector to enhance economic development efforts here in the Greater Phoenix region. In the last five years, we've helped over 220 companies locate their new jobs and investment to the market. You see there, it's over 44,000 jobs in the last five years. About 14,000, a little over 14,500 have been in the East Valley, which is a little over about 30%, and about $53 billion in capital investment. So we're seeing a lot of investment in the East Valley, clearly in the city of Phoenix, which you kind of consider the central part of the Greater Phoenix area, and then in the West Valley cities as well. What you see before you is, oh, sorry, the, some of the regional results on the last fiscal, couple fiscal years. This fiscal year of FY '24, we're actually around 6,800 new jobs for the market, and qualified prospects around 257, and assisted locates around 45 right now. All right. Some of the, some of the recent announcements, notable announcements in the East Valley, these are not all of the announcements, but just kind of a sampling of some pretty cool projects. Arizona Lithium is a research center in Tempe that are growing. They have a big lithium mine up in the northwest Arizona called Big Sandy. So this research center is developing new ways to process lithium from, from the ground. Clearly, an important part of our economy is electric vehicles, battery storage. You see LG Electronics on there with over 1,900 jobs in the southeast valley. Battery storage and electrifying of America is becoming more and more important, and lithium is certainly a big, important part, piece of that, that supply chain. Connect Homes in the East Valley, over 180 jobs. They're making modular homes, so kind of a wide variety of companies that are locating in the southeast valley. Carbon capture, carbon capture is really a direct air capture facility, bringing and removing CO2 from the atmosphere. So in terms of the clean tech economy and a lot of the jobs and new economy types of industries that are, they're developing around carbon-free technologies, this is one of those that shows Greater Phoenix area. DSV is a transportation logistics company. EZink, another battery facility, they're manufacturing a specific component of their zinc batteries and hoping to grow more than beyond, you know, those initial 13 jobs. And then again, LG, which will clearly continue to grow that battery technology here in Greater Phoenix. Over $5.5 billion investment, building batteries for electric vehicles, for electric storage, and actually creating, with the Arizona Commerce Authority, which is one of our partners, the creation of the Future 48 Workforce Accelerator, actually, which will be here in Apache Junction at the Central Arizona College.
Can I ask a question, please? What is a phase-one job compared to a phase-two job?
Two, a phase-one and two? Well, we count, we, so Arizona Commerce Authority, for an example, will count a, like, a five-year projection on jobs. We'll count what we consider phase-one, which is usually a 12- to 18-month projection of those jobs. So somewhere between 12 and 24. It really kind of depends on the company, and they're telling us, you know, in our initial hiring phase, we're going to hire this amount of people. So eventually, you know, LG, for an example, maybe we consider 1,900 jobs. They may actually be closer to 2,500 to 3,000 jobs and growing in the future, but we're going to count that kind of, a little bit more of a conservative estimate on the front end of the, of that job count. And we actually go back, after three years, go back to companies that we worked with and try to ask them how many jobs they've actually created, and what we find is typically, overall, we'll have more jobs than initially we counted in our metrics for that period.
Thank you.
All right. We run this revenue return estimate for all the communities that are part of the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. It's based on an in-plan model that's widely used by all the communities. We estimate for every dollar that Apache Junction puts into the economic council, you have about $16 of direct revenue back, and about $39 of total revenue, which is a total based on, you know, supply chain, additional customer and consumer jobs, et cetera. The direct revenues are really more the state shared revenues and property sales and utility taxes to the community. So our estimates, again, $16 for every dollar invested. You see there, the funding request of approximately $19,320 for this upcoming year. We estimate about $2.1 million in new direct revenues based on this investment, and about $48, almost $50 million in consumer spending generated by those Apache Junction jobs, employed Apache Junction residents by those companies. We see, continue to see results through our regional success. Again, you see GPEC-assisted locates, the top right corner, have created about 710 jobs region-wide estimated for Apache Junction residents over the past five years. We show commute patterns and retail studies, and employees of these locates really, you know, live and spend their incomes and across the board, but typically tend to spend their money either near where they work, or certainly where they, near where they live. And so, again, a company that selects a market location in Greater Phoenix will continue to see benefit throughout the communities and increase tax revenues. All right. We are on the, the last year of our three-year strategic plan FY '23 through '25. So this coming year will be FY '25 and the strategic plan goals. After, in this coming year, we will start working on our FY '26 through '28 goals, strategic plan. And again, we have our action plans for each of those fiscal, excuse me, fiscal years. Goal one, really leading an ambitious shared vision for the region's economic future, which is driving conversations around policy priorities, working with the state legislature, the governor's office, the mayor and councils across the region, to really enhance the pillars of our economic economy through infrastructure, education, workforce development, et cetera, and making sure that we remain competitive for the companies that are considering locations here in Greater Phoenix. Goal two is enhancing the foundation of the, of the future economy with a focus on emerging innovation-driven industries. Part of that is enhancing the perception of Greater Phoenix, so infrastructure such as available electricity, certainly water is something that we've battled the national perception on for, for this region, and really fortifying our business attraction efforts, continuing to drive those, those numbers in both companies nationally and internationally to this market. And then lastly, the goal three is expanding our organizational capacity to continue to grow with our communities, to meet the needs of our communities, increasing our investment from the private sector, diversified funding sources, and then professional development, to make sure that we remain one of the top economic development organizations in the country for our communities. And then I just wanted to kind of provide an update on our fiscal year '24 activities. We have seen good activity in the market, about 112% of our overall goal. 25% of our prospects are internationally based. In the, in the past, we saw that number really around 15% to 16%. It's grown considerably. We've seen a lot of investments from a lot of the APAC regions, Taiwan, et cetera, European nations that have had some interest. We've even had a company from Australia that was interested in, in the Phoenix area. We're about 106% of our activity level from the last year, same time last year. Again, these numbers are through, this is our current fiscal year. These numbers are through the end of May. So we're currently about 41 companies. Today, actually, we're about 45. Almost $3 billion in capital investment and over 6,200 jobs, projected to be around 7,300 by the end of this month. And then the average high-wage salary of 90,000, over $90,000. Again, our prospect activity, we have 206 active prospects this year. We've seen 240 come into the pipeline. The number that's active is lower because what happens is some companies, as they come into the pipeline and we're working with them, they may either, that project could eventually end up on hold. They may choose a different location, or they may actually, you know, that project, again, may die and be held to a later point in time. That, that, our entire prospect portfolio represents quite a bit of investment, over $38 billion, over 55,000 potential jobs to the market, and over 70,000 square feet of industrial and office space potential for the market as well. And then in terms of, you may have questioned what types of prospects we're seeing. So if you look at the right really quickly, we see about, of the 240 active prospects, 204 are industrial, which is about 85% of our overall portfolio. Pre-COVID, we were probably about 45% office and 55% industrial, certainly with, with COVID and the work-from-home strategies that many companies employed. Our office projects have seen a decrease, although I will say we are starting to see a jump in activity for some of those office-type of projects, back office, financial services, insurance, et cetera, as those companies kind of determine their return-to-office plans and how to get people and their employees back in, into those places of employment. So we've seen, majority of our office projects are small, a few larger ones, but really on the, on, our overall portfolio is large industrial deals, over 100,000 square feet. If you look at the left there in terms of operational types, about 70% actually in our industrial sectors are actually manufacturing, which is, which is a great number. We want to see manufacturing in a market, so we see some heavy manufacturing. These are some companies, maybe in the chemicals that supply the semiconductor market or some battery manufacturing, et cetera. Light manufacturing and assembly can be kind of across the board, and then certainly advanced high-tech with companies like TSMC and Intel's expansion, and LG, et cetera, these companies that are building the products of the future. So that gives you kind of a good idea of the types of projects that we're seeing in the pipeline. And then lastly, again, I'll mention our international prospects have gone up. They basically have swapped numbers. Our California-based projects were about 25% pre-COVID, and so that's gone down a little bit, mostly because we, the office deals that we are seeing out of either LA, Bay Area, Southern California have gone down somewhat, as I mentioned. But our international prospects have really helped fill that pipeline, and we're continuing to see more and more investment. We have a big group in for the Select USA Summit, so pre-summit meetings is Thursday and Friday, then we'll be in Select USA next week in Washington DC to meet with a lot of international companies across different industries, primarily semiconductor, battery, healthcare, bio life, life sciences, et cetera. So these are the companies that we're seeing activity, and again, we're hoping to, and working on, really continuing to develop that international pipeline.
Brad?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Going back there, it had, for headquarters location, you had 65 unknown. Does that mean you have people interested, but you have no idea where their home is?
Yes, correct, yeah. So what, what happens in some cases is companies that contact us, they work through a variety of sources. Some will contact us directly, and so we'll know who those companies are. There are companies that work through either brokerage companies that, as they represent those, those clients, they're reaching out to different national markets like Phoenix and Dallas and et cetera, and they'll let us know who those companies are, but there are some that are working through these site-selection consultants and other sources that do not want their company name known for various reasons. I had one in town a couple weeks ago, and they were very good at masking their company name. They didn't want, you know, even using first names only, because they did not want any, for any, any way for their company name to get in the press, out in the public, where their employees and wherever they're, they're at now, to know that they may be considering moving, closing down a different operation. So we do have some unknown companies, and typically through the, through the process, eventually we'll find, we'll find, we either sign NDAs or we'll eventually find out who they are. But there are some that go through the whole process. If they don't select Greater Phoenix, we may not know until they eventually announce a different locations in some other market. It's frustrating, but it does happen, yeah.
So it's not, it's not like we have to be concerned about the, you know, threats of, you know, from, you know, terrorists or, you know, that they're not hiding that or disclosing that because they're, you know?
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's the case. We do, when they get to a point where they're actually going to, you know, we're going to provide the information that they're, they need to help them make the decision in terms of, you know, it might be labor market analysis, maybe cost comparisons. When they get to a point where they are going to lease a building or buy land, that, that information will come out, and certainly if that's, that's an issue, you know, that will stop or certainly pause that process. So we have seen that with, you know, a few Chinese companies, and, you know, where they were looking at sites near Luke Air Force Base, and that has been put on hold, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah. Doesn't happen often, but it certainly could, yeah.
All right, unless there's other questions for him.
Thank you very much for your time tonight, and again, it's my pleasure to, to provide an update on our activities at GPEC, and certainly look forward to working with, with Pat. And he's at GPEC and, you know, in our ear constantly, which we, we like. And, you know, we certainly love working with him and the team here, and look forward to working on some, some deals in the near future that would select Apache Junction. So, thank you.
Any questions?
Only question I have is, the appointment, is it always for one person, or does it get passed around to other city council members?
We haven't done that in the past. We could in the future, yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah, no, it's...
I didn't know if it was a lifetime appointment.
No, not really.
Forever. You're never going to get out.
And I don't know if Pat wants to speak to this, but, and can there be opportunities for ambassadors? Or, you know, I don't know if you thought about when Councilmember Cross was bringing that up, because we can start involving more.
Yes, to add to this, Mayor and I had a brief conversation about two months ago, and the continuity is great. Obviously, if Councilmember Heck wants to retire, that could be certainly an opportunity. There are opportunities to bring elected officials along in certain things, ambassador panels. There's a, a pre, I'll be up here, a pre-Select USA event going on this Thursday that only one person, staff person can go, but there are other opportunities. And yes, I definitely want to get as many council members involved, you know, and so when those opportunities come up, I'm happy to communicate those.
We have about at least 12, what we call ambassador events, and so those are events that we like to bring in our entire investor network, whether it's public or private sector. Every member of those organizations is, can be an ambassador and can join those, those events. We just ask that they RSVP, and they've been on topics like water availability, on electric, the electric infrastructure, for an example. We have one that we do with site-selection consultants in February in advance of the Waste Management Phoenix Open. But this year, our topics will be centered around industries that we are targeting for the region and kind of a forward-looking, a forward look on those industries and what it means for the region, region's economy moving forward. So I look forward, look to those. You should be receiving that information. If not, let me know, and I'd be glad to make sure you're on those email lists, but I'm sure that you all are, and you can certainly come down and attend those, whether they're in person or virtual.
And Pat, when is this anticipated to be on consent agenda?
It'll be, sorry, it'll be on consent agenda July 2nd.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Have a safe trip back. Okay, presentation, discussion, extension through August 31st, 2024, and individual towing contracts currently placed in the Apache Junction towing CL. Those are different companies, and they're due to expire on June 30th, 2024.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rob Whistler, City Manager's Office. I'm here tonight to recommend to Council an additional extension of the current police towing contracts. The current contracts came into effect in 2017 and were set to expire in April, but Council voted to extend those contracts through June 30th. The city put out a new towing RFP, which closed just a few weeks ago, and is currently in the process of selecting vendors for the new contract. The extension before you tonight is needed to bridge the gap, the two-month gap from July 1st through August 31st, to ensure that AGPD does not lose towing service in the interim until September 1st, which is the start date for the new contracts. Mayor and Council, this item is on for your possible consideration on the consent agenda tomorrow night. Staff recommends approval of the tow contract extension, and I'm available for any questions.
Mayor?
Yes.
The submitted bids that you have, are they complete and filled out? Or are they going to be deemed inappropriate or insufficient?
Can I answer? We can, we can answer. They're going good.
They're good bids, in other words?
We got some, yeah.
Vetted?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross, Council. Yes, there's an ongoing process. And without getting into too much detail, because there's still some confidentiality at this level, and there's competition with these companies, the process is ongoing. There's a team from the police department that is looking them over. There's also some verification of some site issues by the Development Service Department, and that process is ongoing, and it's on schedule, probably, you will see it probably in July or August. Is that correct, Mayor?
That's correct. We don't anticipate any, yeah, any issues.
Not, not at this point, but we do not anticipate any issues going forward.
My biggest concern is, is do we have legitimate bids at this point in time that, you know, will go through the vetting process?
There's been bids...
Because in the past, we've had bids that came in that weren't filled out completely, weren't signed correctly, and all that good stuff.
Bids have been submitted, and they are being reviewed as we speak.
Mayor?
I can't really say, some, some have been revoked, or some have been rejected.
This right here, though, is not for the new contract.
Correct.
This is just to continue the existing contracts that are already in place for two more months.
Correct.
Yes, because they terminated in 2017, sorry, started in 2017, and this is, this is the year they're going to end, so we extended it. This is now the second time.
So whether they submitted new bids or not is irrelevant. This is just a continuation for two months.
For purpose of these three contracts, correct.
Mayor, how do we give the 98 ball on this? Why are we doing extensions? Why didn't we deal with this on the front end, knowing it was coming up?
So we had, when we went out for the first time, we released an RFP, but in the process of, we, as part of the RFP process, we received questions from potential bidders. And as we got back questions, we realized that we had issues with two areas in particular that were particularly problematic. One was, we updated a lot of the contract, but the scoring section just didn't wind up working with that. And additionally, it wasn't clear the submission form. We, as it was originally done, it was going to be both a questionnaire and a professional proposal document, but we determined that it was too confusing, and we decided we just wanted to do one. And so we reworked the proposal to basically include everything that we wanted out of a questionnaire into that. The long and short of it is, is that we didn't want to reject any good bids because they, simply they, the submission process was confusing.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Soller, if I can add to what Robert explained, when we released the first bid, we anticipated that through June 30th would be enough. And then when we had to redo the bid, and the start date moved from July 1st all the way out to September 1st, we need to extend this, so the contract. So because of that hiccup that he described in the original bid documents that needed to be corrected, is the reason we had to come back.
Okay. As long as we get, out of all of it, a good company that follows the contract.
Yeah, and that's exactly our goal.
Any other?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to see that in consent agenda.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night for this item, right, to extend, yeah.
Okay. Presentation, discussion, and professional services agreement with, for public hearing services. Judge.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Hope everybody's having a good summer. Don't we discuss each of these individually, or all three at once?
Individually.
So the first one is the agreement with Teresa Hunt. So we currently have two regular public defenders and one conflict, in case there's conflicts of interest, and we have to go to a third. And right now, Karen Nicely and Diana Broton are the... And right now, Karen Nicely and Diana Broughton are the two. Ms. Broughton wishes to cut back on her law practice, so she doesn't want to do the full contract anymore. But we have Teresa Hunt, who's been working as our conflict public defender, and basically they're both going to just switch roles and switch contracts. So it's going to be the same amount of work that each of them does, or, you know, Ms. Hunt will be doing Ms. Broughton's position, and Ms. Broughton will be doing Ms. Hunt's position, and it'll be the same total salaries, or payments to them total.
Okay, we have any discussions, questions?
Makes sense to me. They're already trained.
And then it's for a two-year contract to start with, and then it'll go for an additional two years after that, the way the contract's worded.
Okay, and that's going to be when we're going to do this?
July 2nd, I'm told.
July 2nd, okay. Presentation, discussion, appointment, and associate magistrate?
Magistrate.
Almost said masturbate, excuse me.
You did!
On-call as needed service.
That's on the official record, too.
Excuse me. That's what, quickly reading, trying to...
All right, so we have the need for some, in other cities, they call them pro-tens here, we would need to call them on-call associate, associate magistrates. In some cases, there ends up being, you know, disqualifications of both myself and Judge McVeigh, or conflicts of interest, and there's a need for additional outside counsel. We have been using Gilbert Figueroa a little bit, but he's wanting to retire fully, so he's not going to be available anymore, so we need to have some additional bodies that can, that can help us. Let's see, Lisa Johnson used to be a part-time judge here, on-call magistrate years ago, before she ended up becoming a City of Mesa full-time magistrate, and the other three are all off the court-appointed list in Maricopa County, where we did a recruitment, and those are the ones that came back. So these were the four that were all interested. It's, it's a diverse group of men, women, and, you know, Ms. Nguyen is Vietnamese descent, so we have some additional diversity from that standpoint. So this will, and they'll get paid $65 an hour for comparison purposes. Mesa pays $85 an hour. Other cities in the area pay anything from 60 to 75, and up to the 85 with Mesa, so it'd be $60 an hour, just only based on the hours that they expend working at the court. So this will be necessary sometimes, for example, I'm going on judicial conference tomorrow through the end of the week. Right now, since we don't have anybody, you know, the court is basically closed. I mean, the staff members are there, and they're working on walk-ins, and people that have cases that come in and need to do payment arrangements and things like that, but we don't have any cases that we can handle in court, because we don't have judges to handle them. Judge McVeigh's going to the judicial conference as well, so this gives us the coverage that we need, when we need it, for making sure that we get the cases covered with judicial bodies that need to be working these cases.
Okay. Go ahead.
I can understand maybe having one person, possibly two, but I'm not understanding why we would need to have four in the rotation. In the last year, how many times was there any kind of issue where we needed to have another judge due to a conflict in the last 12 months?
Well, there's been several cases where we've had to use Judge Figueroa, but then he's not available anymore. One case in particular, Mr. Schroeder knows, is involving a former mayor's son who had some issues, and we've had to disqualify ourselves on those cases because of issues they raised, and them getting involved in court matters for that matter. So every time that gentleman's son comes up, we have to have a different judge to handle those cases, and he's had several in the past year, including a jury trial that's going to be coming up as well, too. So, you know, and the reason for having four is, you know, everybody's got their own practices and, and things that they do. This assures us that we always have someone that's going to be available. Obviously, we don't need four people at the same time, so it's not going to be like there's four times the cost. It doesn't matter which one we use, it'd just be that we have some flexibility in, you know, going, going for outside judges when, when we need them. It just gives the flexibility to the, to the court.
Okay. I also wanted to ask, I saw in this that, you know, when you and Judge McVeigh are out on vacation, I can understand where you're talking about going to something that, as judges, you need to go to, but wouldn't it be very unusual for the two judges to schedule their vacation at the same times?
That's correct. So it's not going to be that, well, the reason why we need that is because we run two courtrooms at the same time right now. So in the volume of cases we have, especially with our annexing new, new land and that type of thing, and extra cases that are coming in, all the enforcement that goes on over on Ironwood with the criminal speeding cases, you know, there's, there's a need for two, two judges to be able to handle all the cases. Some mornings, we have as many as 79 cases, and you need two judges working them. You know, I'll be working one courtroom and doing plea agreements and motions and things like that in one courtroom, and then things get sent over to Judge McVeigh. So when one of us is on vacation, there's only one to handle two courtrooms worth of cases, and then we're stuck with staff perhaps having to go till two or three in the afternoon off of a morning docket, whereas we can, you know, handle it with another judge coming in, and that way we've got both courtrooms continuing to operate and giving the customer service, instead of having to pile them on other dates when there's two judges there, and then, and then the caseloads go way up, and then everybody's having to sit there all morning long for a lot of them before they can get their case heard.
Well, I can understand, you know, when you have those kind of circumstances. I do want to ask, since the Ironwood corridor has changed its speed limit, there were, we had everything for at least five miles down there that was at 25 miles per hour, but I understand that they kind of reduced that down to a little over a mile or so, and the rest is 40 to 45 coming up. Do we think that we're going to have some reduction, hopefully, of some speeding cases?
Well, there's going to be reductions in speeding cases, because right now, the Police Department has decided to take Officer Hatch and move him to other areas where there's some need for stop sign violations and red lights and complaints from neighbors, you know, about, about different kinds of violations occurring, so they're having him go to different areas. Normally, he was working that shift all day long, every...
Yeah, he could have had an award for as catching as many speeds.
Every day, so we're seeing, we're seeing less cases in that regard, but even with that reduction, there's still the need to have two courtrooms going, so we can keep cases moving.
I totally understand the two courtrooms, and, you know, I was just questioning why we needed as many as four.
Yeah, just to give us a flexibility. Yes, Mr. Cross.
Yeah, so these individuals aren't on the payroll until they're called up to duty?
Correct. They only just get the $60 an hour.
Right, so...
They don't get any benefits or anything, it's just a straight...
Like you're calling into the school district needing a substitute for the day.
Sure.
That's where the expenditure only comes in at that point in time.
Sure, and there's no state retirement contributions or anything, it's just they're paid that, and they're 1099 at the end of the year.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm not in the courtroom that much.
You're welcome. I appreciate the questions, I'd rather make sure you understand.
That's where I wanted some clarification, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Judge, real quick, the last candidate, Ken, Ken?
Nguyen.
Nguyen, Nguyen?
Nguyen.
So of all of them, she appears to have no experience as a municipal or judge?
No, she has two years of experience doing the same type of matters in Justice of the Peace Courts for Maricopa County, so she's assured...
A JOP would be the same as a...
Yes, they do the same thing on the criminal cases. It doesn't matter if you're a Justice of the Peace or a City Court magistrate, you know, they do the same work. They do, you know, initial appearances and arraignments and plea agreements and trials and that type of thing.
You don't have to be a JD to be a Justice of the Peace, so...
Well, these are all attorneys.
Oh, I know that, I'm just saying, it's a little different if you're, you have your JD versus someone who does not.
Right, but we got all, we got all attorneys, because we know the code says it has to be an attorney.
I just thought, we've got all these people to choose from, should we be getting the very best that we can?
Yeah, like I said, she has two years of experience doing jury trials and non-jury trials as well for Justice Peace Courts, and those stay pretty busy, because you know how many JP Courts there are throughout Maricopa County, and she works at quite a few of them. Was there any other questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, now do the last one, which is presentation, discussion, proposed amendments to the city code, Article 4-8-1, municipal court fee structure.
All right, so this is, this is proposal for, there's two different matters. The first one is proposal for modification of the fee structure for court-appointed attorney cases. You know, the court-appointed attorneys receive like $40,000 each per contract, you know, at the 125 per case right now, it doesn't cover their contracts, and we'd like to make sure the city isn't out of pocket or is out of pocket as less as possible on these type of things. You know, I've given you the copy of what Mesa, excuse me, not Mesa, Tucson, and this is what they do, and it's based on the attorney fee schedule for public defenders, based on indigency guidelines and quasi-indigency guidelines under federal Health and Human Services, poverty guidelines, which is what the Arizona Supreme Court uses. So it bases things based on number of people in the family and what your income is and that type of things, and we would be proposing to do the same thing as what they're doing down in Tucson for all the Justice of the Peace Courts in Tucson. Now, we still don't have to impose the full amounts on cases where the person's not able to afford, we can still waive court-appointed attorney fees if someone's, you know, both indigent and disabled, and it's impossible for them to do community service even to pay their court-appointed attorney fees. Now, some of these where they're making, they can make up to 134,000 a year if they've got a family of eight, we usually don't see that, but we've had people apply for 70,000, 80,000, and at least this gives us a good guideline of what we can charge, and, you know, when, when they're not qualified to get court-appointed attorneys, rather than just appointing someone on every single case where they ask for a court-appointed attorney when there's potential jail at issue, and that's the cases where these come up, is when the prosecutor is asking for jail time on, or a suspended jail sentence on cases. And the subsection L still allows us to deviate from this, the city code is still allows us to deviate from this depending on circumstances of individual cases, where the fees can either be waived or reduced in the interest of justice, depending on what the particular facts of an individual case are.
Mayor?
Yes?
When was the last time we upped our fees?
It's been before I was here, so I don't know how many years it's been. I think it's been a while.
It looks that way, because these are very recent.
Yeah, and then, just so you know, what we do, too, is people that say don't have a job to start with, you know, at the 125 fees, we tell them, well, you can do, you can either find a way to pay it, or you can do community service, and we let them do community service at $15 an hour, or if they do it for the city, for a, for the cleanup on, on the code enforcement division, they get credit for 2250 an hour for that, and we have that as an extra incentive to try to have them do work for the city. And we've had quite a, quite a few hours per month are being provided to the city on that, and in, for nonprofit agencies throughout the city as well. But this, this gives us a way to, to charge some higher fees, especially for those that make more money, as opposed to just charging them the 125, because right now, the city code limits me to only charging 125 per case at the most.
So Judge, how do you, how do you validate or confirm their income?
They have to fill out a questionnaire.
Okay.
A questionnaire under, under penalties of perjury.
Okay.
Obviously, they could lie to us, but we're not going to sit there and question, you know, dozens of people every month and go check with their employers and all that kind of thing, but they're usually pretty accurate about it.
You don't request their last three years of income tax returns?
Yeah, questions, Mr. Schroeder?
Okay, questions?
No.
All right, we'll be hearing all, we're doing these on consent agenda on the July...
2nd.
2nd, right, yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for the updated input, Judge.
Oh, you're welcome. Have a good week, everybody.
And with that, I will adjourn work session. Thank you.